To CEC 20's special meeting. It's designed, as most of you know, to sort of provide an overview of parent involvement in the education system. And just share some of our experiences with me here tonight. I guess it is a special meeting. I think we probably do have to take, might as well take roll call. And also if, as Vito is taking roll call, if everyone could just, all the CEC members could just quickly introduce themselves, go on camera for a second, say hello, say your name. We're still admitting people here. This is great.
Steve, I'm having difficulties with computers. I'm on two separate devices.
Okay.
Is Kevin here to take roll call?
He is, yeah.
Thank you.
Kevin V, can you just do that? And, and we'll all introduce ourselves as you call our names. Kevin Vesny, can you hear me?
Yeah, sorry, he's responding while I was muted. Yeah. We're ready now?
Yeah, you can just do roll call for attendance.
Sure, yeah. So President Stephen Stone?
Yep, I'm here and everyone, I'm Steve Stone, the president of CEC 20.
Jennifer Hu? I don't think he's here yet. Elizabeth Chen?
Here. CEC 20, second Assistant Principal, President.
And Vita Lobella?
Here, Recording Secretary.
Marie Burgueris?
Yeah. Marie Burgueris, I am the Treasurer, CEC 20.
Gada Amin? God is not here, I believe. Yona Sifri? Sufi?
Hello, good evening. This is Yona, I'm a CEC member.
Li Ping Yan?
Hi, this is Li Ping Yan, I'm the CEC member.
Maya Rosenblatt? I don't believe it's on my join yet. Joyce C?
Yes, hello everyone, Joyce, I'm the Council Member for CEC 20.
And Kevin Zhao?
Hello, everyone, this is Kevin. I'm the CEC member of the, CEC member 20, I mean, CEC 20 member.
And that is roll call. Great, thank you, Kevin. And just for parents who may not know, we have, all CECs have an assistant, an administrative assistant, and that is Kevin Vesny, who just did the roll call. And he's incredibly helpful and really helps everything, everything work that we do. Okay, and then I just want to make a note too for parents that we, there was a scheduling mix up and so we don't have Department of Education interpreters here tonight, but we do have a multilingual CEC, which we're very grateful for. So if the, and Kevin Vesny, correct me if I'm wrong, but if parents want interpretation, they can still dial into the, well, we have Mandarin speakers on tonight. And so Kevin, correct, they can dial into the interpretation line for Mandarin and they will have, and Kevin, Kevin Zhao and Joyce and Li Ping will be there and help interpret. Is that correct?
Yes, I'll put the phone number for that right now.
Great.
I'm sorry to interrupt, I do have a little problem here because I dialing already, but it's keep, the music keep going on. I'm not sure if it's, but nobody else on the line or it's, oh, I'm joining in the meeting now, okay.
Great. And actually, Kevin or Joyce or Li Ping, do one of you just want to make an announcement in Mandarin? How to join the line if, if someone wants to? Just read the, read the number out and explain, you can dial in.
Yeah, where can we find the number?
Kevin, did you post that in the chat yet?
I, yeah, it's on the chat.
Okay, there it is.
And Steve, just to mention, the parents can note that the phone numbers aren't in the body of the email that I sent them. So they can also refer to that as well.
Great, yep. Oh, and I see we were, we are just joined by our Arabic Council Member, Gada Amin. Gada, do you just want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, hi, I'm Gada Amin, I'm our Council Member. I have, I'm sorry, because I just come in. For two kids, one of in elementary school, PS170, and the other one, he is in middle school, in McKinley School.
Great, thank you, Gada.
Thank you.
And I've seen, I've seen some names here that potentially are Arabic speaking, although I'm not entirely sure. So if there are any parents who would like Arabic interpretation, Gada, are you comfortable calling into the Arabic line and hosting that room?
Yes. Yes. So.
So, and Kevin Vesny, correct, like, Gada, any, like, Gada or Kevin Zhao, they have to call into the language line on a separate device, right?
Yes, if not, they'd have the audio coming out one device, so it'd be better to call through a phone.
Okay.
Or through another computer.
Okay.
So, I have to code this number for them?
Say again?
Should I repeat the number for them? The number in chat?
Yes.
Should I say it in Arabic?
Please, Gada, just explain that if someone wants interpretation in Arabic, they can dial into that line and you will, you will, you will be in that language room to provide interpretation.
Say it or write it in Arabic, write it?
You can say it. You can be short too, you can just say, anyone who wants to listen in Arabic, please dial into this number. Great, thank you, Gada. Kevin or Joyce or Li Ping, do you think an announcement in Mandarin is necessary or have people started joining?
I can do the announcement.
Thank you. Thank you, Joyce. And then for, for Spanish, Kevin Vesny, our administrative assistant, will be in the main meeting room with us. And he can provide interpretation. Are there any Spanish, are there any parents in the meeting who would like Kevin to provide Spanish interpretation as we speak? If so, could you just post in the chat? But otherwise, if English is fine, Kevin won't interpret in Spanish. So if anyone in the main room would like Spanish interpretation throughout the meeting, please.
Yeah, yeah, he's funny, please.
Yes, we can do that. And so Kevin Vesny, do you think it's here?
I just put in the chat, the Spanish line.
Right, no, thank you, Li Ping, except I just don't know if Kevin Vesny, I think he should, Kevin Vesny, can you do both? Or is that too complicated to be?
No, I think handle it, I have everything pre-written, unless you need something unique, I can be, I can hear you guys well. So I'll just, if you have anything unique comes up, I have like everything ready to share a screen and I meet you all host. But I have all the links available, so everything should be okay. I can go to the Spanish line.
Perfect. Kevin, before you do that, just drop, can you drop all the translated presentations in the chat? So, that's great, so we will now have three language lines, all being interpreted by CEC members, which is great. And we're going to put in the chat, the presentation in each language. And there's also a Russian presentation, by the way, in the chat for any Russian speakers. So the numbers for your interpretation lines are in the chat, the presentations are in the chat. I'm going to, so the agenda for tonight will just be, we're going to go over a few different points. We have a short presentation. And then we're going to open it up for questions and answers. And that's the agenda. And it's very simple and very straightforward. And the goal is really just for all parents who are, who want to learn more about education and parent involvement in the district, how you can get involved, what these organizations are, what they do. And hopefully give you a little bit more knowledge as you move forward with your children in the district. So let's, I'm going to share my screen.
I just have one, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I can hear the, what's he speaking on the Mandarin night completely.
Say that again, Kevin?
I can hear what you are speaking on the Mandarin night. So I think it's on the first, the interpreter, we need to mute ourselves on the Zoom meeting. Or the turn off the speaker, I mean, otherwise, the other nights will be all, we can all hear you speaking.
Okay, what's your number, Kevin? The first couple digits, I can mute everybody else but you. Kevin? I mean.
Kevin Zhao, what's your number?
My number?
Yeah, your number.
You mean the number I dial in for the Mandarin night?
Yeah, what is it? So I can mute everybody else but you.
Just one second. The number I dial in is 347-966-4114. And the PIN number I use, 349.
No, no, your phone number, your phone number that you, your phone.
917. 889.
Okay, yeah. I'll mute everybody else but you, and I think someone else didn't mute themselves, so you can try now, do you hear anything? I don't hear anything, so, except you.
Hello? Okay, I don't hear anything.
Yeah, you can. Everything good? That's, yeah, that's all set. Okay, and Kevin, I'll give you a second to go over to the Spanish line. Yeah. Oh, I see, let me just post the PowerPoint in the chat in English. You got that? Awesome. Okay, I'll just, I'll start. You know, again, this is CEC 20, Parent Involvement. We start the presentation, there's this quote from the New York City Parents' Bill of Rights. And the Parents' Bill of Rights is a document written by the city that specifies, it states, parents have rights, you know, your children are part of the public school system. You can expect the Department of Education to do a lot of things for you. And you shouldn't be, you should not feel like you can't ask questions, you shouldn't feel like you can't be part of the education, be part of the dialogue. And I chose this quote, this is the beginning of the document, but I encourage everyone to click on the link and, and the source and look at it for yourself. And this quote is, "Each child's maximum potential can best be achieved through a partnership between parents and the education community to foster active engagement between parents and schools. Parents have certain rights and responsibilities." And all the organizations we're going to talk about tonight are really organizations that are intended to to, to make these, sort of protect these rights, to ensure that parents have, have a say in their child's education. Number one, the best representative for your child is always you. Keep that in mind. We really want to encourage all parents to be advocates for their child, all parents to raise issues that they might have with the schools. Please, please don't be afraid to ever bring up an issue that you might be having or a question or concern that you might have. There are lots of ways that communication works. There's, there's email you should be getting from your school, there's announcements that your kids will bring home in their backpacks, the websites, and then don't be afraid to pick up the phone and call the school. Get involved with meetings, of course, parent-teacher conferences are the best example, but there are also open houses that schools will have. And the number one contact person for issues is always your parent coordinator. And this link here, you can click on this link and it will take you to a page where you can look up your parent coordinator at all of the schools in District 20. That parent coordinator's job is there to help parents with issues. But we know parents are often very busy, parents have a lot of things they have to do, and they can't do everything. So we have all these organizations that we're going to talk about tonight. At every school, there are certain organizations. As everyone probably knows, a school is run by a principal, assistant principals, the parent coordinator, and then of course, teachers. For parents at a school, the first organization you should be aware of is the Parent-Teacher Association, or a parent association. Then you have a school leadership team, and we'll talk about each of these in a minute. And then you have what's called a Title I Parent Advisory Council. These are all organizations at the school. Then the second kind of organization is at the district. So you see here a map of District 20, this is our district here in southwest Brooklyn. You know, we have about 43, 44 schools in the whole district, four high schools. And at the district level, you have a superintendent who runs the district, you have a deputy superintendent. Then you also have two really important people, the family leadership coordinator and the family support coordinator. And these are people you can always go to with, with, with any requests there. It's, in a way, they are like the district version of the parent coordinator at the school level. So at the district level, you have, you also have parent organizations. So the first one is a President's Council. Then you have the Community Education Council, that's us. And then you have the Title I District Parent Advisory Council, the DPAC. So, for the first, for the first discussion, talk about parent-teacher associations, we're going to have one of our CEC members, who is a PTA president, Yona, are you there?
Yes.
Go ahead, Yona.
Okay, hi, everyone. For you that don't know me, my name is Yona Sufi, I've been a CEC member for about a year and a half now. Apart from being a CEC member, I am also the PTA president at PS170 Ralph A. Fabritio School. This is my first year as president. And one of the reasons that I decided to be active in the community is to learn more about the education system, to have a more active role in different levels of the education. And also to be an advocate, not just for my two children, but also for other issues that might affect other kids. I have two sons, my youngest Noel is in kindergarten and my oldest is a third grader. As a quick snapshot, PTA, or for some schools, it's called a parent association. It involves mainly parent communication, activities, and fundraising. Automatically, all parents of the school are members of the PTA. The structure of the PTA is typically a president, a treasurer, and a recording secretary. The dynamics of the PTA is primarily to serve the parents of the school with different meetings. We hold one monthly meeting and also one executive meeting. The executive meetings are done with a principal in a way to not only discuss the upcoming meeting, but also to discuss the different activities that are being put together. Usually, the officers will serve a one-year term, however, they are allowed to serve more than one year, depending on the availability. I would encourage all of you parents to be more involved with the school community. It is a great opportunity to learn more and to be more involved. Also, different schools hold very different and various events geared to their specific population. One of my goals as a PTA president is to give back to the community and create as many different activities as I can throughout the year to engage the parents, but also to create a fun and educative environment for the children. And you can do that through arts and crafts nights, through different workshops. And I am lucky and happy to say that post-COVID, we have been able to hold our events in person, which has been pretty exciting to see how the community came together. If you have any questions, feel, please feel free to reach out to me through my CEC email address, which I'll be putting in the chat. Thank you so much, everyone.
Great, thank you so much, Yona, very good job. The next school organization we want to talk about is the school leadership team. And to do that, we have Marie, who's one of our members, who serves, who has served on two school leadership teams. So Marie?
Hi, everyone. So the senior leadership team at the school is a really good opportunity to familiarize yourself with the decision-makers at the school. The principal is always a part of it. When you join the SLT, you commit to attending a meeting. The, currently, the SLT that I serve on, that meeting is in-person. The prior SLT that I served on was during COVID, so the meetings at the time were virtual. I believe, you know, it can, the principal drives that agenda. And the SLT consists of always the principal, the UFT representative, and usually the parent coordinator attends it. And there is an equal number of parents and school staff. Other teachers usually come in and other professionals come in as guest speakers. So it is definitely an opportunity to meet a lot of school staff. It definitely is a great opportunity to see what is important to the principal of the school. And it is a great opportunity to put forth some of the matters that are important to you and also to other parents, you know, that you advocate for. Some of the issues, well, not the issues, but some of the agenda items that get discussed on SLTs is comprehensive education plan, which basically has the school's education goals for the year. And it, you basically have a view on the metrics of the school, such as eye-ready assessments and state tests. And you also have a great view of the school's budget. They usually discuss budgeting, announcements of grants, and discussions of how the grants and different, I guess, inflows of money are used, as well as discussions of serious budget shortfalls and how they will be approached or resolved. So for instance, if a school has a budget shortfall and they need to downsize some of the teachers, you basically, you will know about it at the senior leadership team meetings. Principals usually drive the agenda, but if a topic is important to you or some of the parents that you know, you can certainly ask to put it on the agenda. And the format of the SLTs can range, the first SLT that I was in was really large and very formal. And the one that I currently serve on is small and informal. So I think, you know, it just definitely depends on the school. And to become a member of the SLT, you need to basically submit your candidacy at the PTA meeting at the start of the year. And then you will be voted by PTA members. Your candidacy will be voted upon, so you are an elected representative at the school. And the terms vary, but they usually are one or two-year terms. And, you know, obviously, if you can only serve for one year, you're, you know, at the end of the year, you can bow out. But when you do become a member of the SLT, you do commit to attending that one meeting a month, which usually lasts for about an hour, hour and 15 minutes. And definitely, I would encourage everyone who wants to be involved to consider serving on the SLT and just basically familiarize yourself with the school's leadership and the school's education metrics and what goals are important, you know, to the schools that your children attend. And Steve has, Steve has a link that you can go on and, you know, read more about the SLTs. And Steve, I'm not sure if you saw in the chat, maybe it was already done, but someone was asking for the English version of the presentation as well.
Yep, I think it got posted, I think Kevin Vesny put it in there.
And I will put my email, just like Yona did, I will drop my email in the chat. So if anybody has any further questions about SLTs, I'll be happy to.
Thank you, Marie. I'm going to try, let's see if I can put the English one more time, put it in the chat, the English version. So I just put the English version of the presentation in the chat again. Okay, so continuing, the next, the next school-level organization is called a Title I Parent Advisory Council. And this, this organization, all schools that meet certain number of families that are considered economic need will receive money from the federal government called Title I funding. And so, as part of the law for Title I funding, schools are, schools have to establish a Title I council that will help plan and evaluate the use of Title I funding at the school. And in many cases, this can be a pretty large amount of a school's budget. And, and again, it's another chance to get involved directly with the school leadership and, and help them understand the, how the Title I funding can be spent. Title I, the, a primary role of the advisory council, the parent advisory council is to do things that help to empower parents. So it's really intended, spend this Title I money and, and help parents get more informed and get more active in their children's education. It's a way of making sure that parents who come from, from families of economic need are not marginalized, are not sort of left out of the conversation. And so a Title I PAC, a parent advisory council, it gets formed at an annual Title I meeting in the fall. There's two required officers, a chairperson and an alternate chairperson. And the term length is usually specified in the bylaws of that parent. And the term length is usually specified in the bylaws of that parent advisory council. So it can, it depends on what the each council says. And there's a link for more information as well on this. Okay, now we will shift to the district organizations. Yona, do you wanna, do you wanna talk about President's Council, since you are a part of that as a PTA president? Or I can talk about it too, if you're not. Yona, are you there still?
Hi, excuse me, sorry, I couldn't hear you.
No worries. Does, does that work to talk about President's Councils?
Sure, of course. Okay, so the President's Council is actually the group of all the presidents, PTA. Those are one monthly meetings and I'm so sorry, my children are in the background. Okay, so as part of the PTA, you are invited once a month to join the other PTA presidents or other executive members of the PTA. The President's Council is a very supportive body because not only deals with, it's a place for the PTA to share their thoughts, but also the superintendent is present at those meetings by providing more information. The structure of the President's Council is very similar to the other types of organizations by having required officers as the president, the recording secretary and the treasurer. Here, there are also nine monthly meetings and everybody serves in a one-year term. One of the things that I noticed, given that I am part of three different, four different organizations, including the SLT, is that in the President's Council, it's a very good source to get information that you can later on relay to your individual schools. So the DOE is, has a very big presence at the President's Council meeting, where they, they provide the additional information. One of the things that I would say as a parent who is involved in different organizations is that depending on what your goal is and that's also dependent on your involvement. If you'd like to be solely helping your own school body, then you'd start off by joining your SLT or your PTA. Also, if you'd like to know more about the district, and I'm sure everybody here on the call has received the messages about the upcoming CEC election, then that would be a good route to go. And again, encouraging all kindergarten parents to be alert and to be involved in this organization.
Great, thanks. Yeah, thank you, Yona. So the next, the next district organization is the Community Education Council. And that's us. And this is, it's usually referred to as a CEC. And CECs get involved with education policy for the district. We also get involved with zoning, which is drawing the boundaries for, for where schools will, will get their families from. So for example, in District 20, we have three new schools that will open in 2024. So over the next two years, there will be a lot of planning on the lines that should be drawn for, for those schools. What, what neighborhoods should those schools draw their students from? That's the kind of issue that CECs get involved with. And then CECs also do a lot of work on capital planning. And that just means planning for construction projects, improvement projects at different schools. CECs, every CEC member has three or four or five schools that they are the, the contact person for. And they can reach, they maintain a communication with those schools and then share that information with, with the CEC and they share those needs back with the superintendent. There's, there's twelve members on a CEC. There are nine that are elected by parents, pre-K through eighth grade parents. There is one, and this is new, for the first time, there is going to be one member who's elected by District 75 parents. So District 75, for anyone who doesn't know, it's students with learning disabilities, severe learning disabilities. So sort of different from other IEP students that might be more, less severe learning disabilities. And then there are two members on each CEC that are appointed by the borough president. And on our CEC, those are Kevin and Marie. CECs have twelve monthly meetings. So we are meeting all through the year, even in the summer. And, and then, you know, those are the required meetings. That's the required, you know, go to each monthly meeting. And there's a lot that happens besides the monthly meetings too. And, and, you know, that involves working with the district, working with elected officials, working with the Department of Education. It's really a role, the CEC role will get you exposure to a lot of people at the district, but a lot of people in the city as well. And CEC members serve two-year terms. And I've also got a link for more information. And then the last and final organization that we'll talk about is the District Parent Advisory Council. And this is just a, a higher level version of the school Title I Parent Advisory Council. The District Parent Advisory Council, again, it's all focusing on that, that source of funding I mentioned, Title I funding and how it's used and spent in the district. And the District Parent Advisory Council is really responsible for making sure that all the schools have active, active PACs, active parent advisory councils going, support those schools if they need to establish a, a parent advisory council. The District Parent Advisory Council, it's the chairperson of every school advisory council. And similar to the school councils, you've got a chairperson and an alternate chairperson as required officers. So those are all the organizations. And then the question that will finish the presentation with is how do you get involved? And for the school organizations, like we said, the, the place to start is really the PTA or the, or the PA, the parent association. Go to the first general meeting, usually in the fall, right when school starts. You'll, you'll get introduced to the current officers. You'll obviously get a first chance to meet with the principal and, and the school staff. And then PTAs and PAs, you can go to a PTA meeting anytime you want. All parents can go. And then in the spring, the PTAs will hold officer elections when they vote on president, recording secretary, treasurer, and that's held in the spring. So that when school starts in the fall, they already have officers in place for those positions. Then if you want to get involved with the school leadership team, Marie already went through this, but I'll just repeat it. You know, the school leadership team meetings, they'll have meetings every month when school is in session. You can always attend a school leadership team meeting anytime you want. But to get voted on to a SLT, like Marie said, you have to get elected by the PTA. And the elections for the SLT will always happen after the PTA holds its elections in the spring. So usually, if you come into a, an SLT in the fall, there will be people, parents already as members. It's very common that there will be openings throughout the year. Parents have to leave for various reasons. And so there, it's very common that there are openings, vacancies. And in that case, you'll have a, a vote from existing SLT members on bringing on new members. And then, and then for the Title I PAC organization, like I said, in the fall, there will usually be, actually required by law, to have a meeting before October 31st, the annual Title I meeting. And the principal in the school will, will notify when that is. And, and then, similar to the other organizations, at some point before the end of the school year, they have elections for the chair and the alternate chair of the Title I PAC. So really, the key thing to remember here is you get involved first thing by, in the fall at your new school, going to the first meeting and then getting involved over the course of the school year. And then in the spring, you could have a chance to become an officer if you want to take that step. And then for the district organizations, so the CEC is unique because it is publicly elected. So as we've been talking about, there is a public election, actually, it's underway now for all the CEC members. And I'll, I'll touch on that in, in a second at the end of the presentation. And then the other way of, is nomination by the borough president. And that's a, that's a little bit of a different process to go through. It requires a little bit of sort of political know-how, lobbying and, and getting your name in there with, so that the borough president will, will know you and recognize you and, and nominate you for a CEC. But the elections are wide open. You can, anyone can declare candidacy for an election, an elected position. And then, as Yona said, the President's Council, if you are elected president of your school PTA, you're automatically a member of President's Council. And then for the Title I DPAC, if you are elected chairperson of your school's Title I PAC, you're automatically on the District Parent Advisory Council title. These are a couple more resources. The District 20 website, you should go there for employee contacts for District 20. And then our CEC 20 website is, is linked here. And then lastly, we've got the Department of Education, the election webpage about CEC elections. And please check that out if you're interested in running for CEC. You can see everything you need to learn about it there. So with that, I will stop. Everyone is welcome, this email is our CEC email. If anyone has direct questions about what we went over tonight or anything that comes to mind after, please feel free. And if anyone would like to ask a question, we have a Google form, a comment form. I think we can also probably, if you'd like to ask your question using the form, we've posted it in the chat. And just looking at the question here, can you be part of the? Yes, the answer is yes, you can be part of the SLT in two different schools. Someone asked in the chat, can you be part of the SLT in two different schools? And the answer is yes. Good question. So I will stop sharing. And if anyone wants to ask a question, you can use the form or it's, it's fine to raise your hand as well if there are any additional questions. And also Kevin and Gada, and Kevin, if there are any questions on the phone lines, please refer those to us as well. Some of the things, I'll just, I guess I'll, members, do, do any members, any CEC members who haven't talked yet, wanted to share a couple things about wha- what they like about the CEC or about the SLTs or PTAs? Go ahead, Vito.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Thank you guys so much for, for showing up tonight. I just want to say, I was PTA president at 187, Kristen McCallough. And I, my wife and I worked together for five years and, and it was really one of the most fulfilling things that I've, I've done with the school system. You know, we came from a great elementary school, my kids were in a great high school. But, you know, the work in the middle school that we did and the school itself was, was so fabulous, it was such a rewarding experience. I, I'm actually friends with many of the staff and the teachers there. And my daughter goes back there and it's just so nice. So you, these, you can develop these kinds of relationships with your school and even, you know, other ways to get involved. And it's, it's not just about your kids, it could become so much more.
And you are evidence of that, for sure.
Yeah, I mean, friends with that bearded guy.
Anyone else, anyone on the, Kevin or Joyce or anyone? Actually, if you guys are on the language lines, you can share your thoughts there as well.
I can, I can show you.
Yeah, sorry.
I still in a, I still in a PTA. Let me.
Go ahead, Joyce.
Because we have Ivan in the school today. So.
We can hear you.
Yeah, that's our PTA, that's all the parents, all the, so really exciting, they're doing a performance with the administration tonight. Yeah, but we say, yeah, we are in the zone. I see very important thing is now, our kids in the school. So I see if my talent is more active, involved, I see our kids will change. Because they will see, I will care about the kids. So we've been a school for helping the kids, other kids too. It also is now, we, we growing and kids together is most important thing. Now in here, our PTA, our, a lot of parents' language very, but they will help this, help, they will help this school to getting better, because every school, they have a translation. So now every parent don't, don't be scary about the language problem, because school will provide it, will, will help you solve the problem. But the first thing is, we need to invite to the school, to the community. We need to, we need a more talent to invite in our CEC. So that's my thought, I would, I would say, I would say, uh, really thankful for my kids' school to help me growing up to the CEC. So this year, I will help more parents to growing up in our school and the CEC. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Kevin Zhao, do you want to speak?
Go, you may if I speak in Mandarin.
Go for it. Great, thanks, Kevin. Do any other CEC members wanted to say a few words?
Yes, Elizabeth.
Go ahead, Elizabeth. Hey, Elizabeth.
Oh, hi. I just want to say, I like being part of the CEC because I think I try to fight misconceptions of our District 20. And I, like other districts, they're always speaking about us as if we're all a monolith or we're all the same. But being part of the CEC and being outspoken, I think, I hope I change people's, other districts' perception of our district. So that was good. And one thing bad about it is sometimes when we're talking, like, we don't have real power. So, but Steve is trying to change that and give us more power so that our thoughts and ideals are really being looked at. So hopefully, the new administration will start looking more carefully and being the time and effort that we put in it, that they'll take, they'll see how important we are. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Yeah, I think it's an important point that you make, which is, you know, C E Cs are the elected voice of parents. You know, none of these other organizations are publicly elected. And um, so they have a lot of um, respect by the city and the Department of Education. So you, you can always get um, the city to, to listen to you. They might not always agree with you, um, but that's, that's just, you know, that's part of life, right? You know, one thing that C E Cs that we do is every other month, um, there'll be a meeting for, with the C E C presidents and the chancellor. Uh, just kind of, uh, you know, on Saturday, uh, direct conversation with the chancellor to share what's going on in your district. So um, and, and C E Cs, I should say, also get involved with a lot of elected officials as well. We have relationships with city council and state, state assembly and state senate. Okay, anything else? Any other? Oh, that's a great question. So someone asked in the chat, how much time do you need to dedicate to C E C? And the answer is, it all depends on you. It's really, the, the only, like I said, the only thing that is required is the meeting once a month. You know, our meetings are on the second Wednesday of every month, six o'clock. That's all that's required. Everyone, the, the thing I really like about C E Cs is everyone is different and everyone um, wants to, usually everyone wants to work on different things. And so um, you can, you can bring some, everyone brings something different to the C E C. Um, some people might want to, um, you know, some people might be very informed on transportation, school busing. Some might be very informed on students with disabilities, some on English language learners. But the amount of time you spend on it is really up to you. And I can tell you, as a president of the C E C, I really just, I, I encourage everyone to get involved, but I'm not, no president of the C E C can ever tell their members what to do. It doesn't work that way. Um, it's not like it's a job. You, you don't have to think of it that way. Um, it's a volunteer role. I should say, we're not, we're not paid. This is all unpaid volunteer work that we do because we care. But I would, I, I, I wouldn't want anyone to not, please don't um, decide not to run because you think it's too much work, because it can really base, be based on what, what fits your life. Anything else?
Uh, Steve, I have a, I have a questions from the Google sheet.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Kevin.
So one from PK Parent asks, it's a multi-question, so you can ask them one at a time. Where do you go to vote on C E C members?
Yep, all voting is online. Um, and you'll be vote, voting through your um, NIXA account. And let me, let me just share. I'm gonna share the um, share my screen here. So if anyone, if, if, if anyone doesn't have a New York City Schools account, this is the webpage. And if Kevin, if, if you don't mind, can you put that in the chat? Are you able to pull that up or?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, so everyone should, should register for a New York City Schools account. And this has a lot more than, this is, you probably know, this is, has a lot of information about your child. Their grades and um, you'll use it when you're um, getting information from schools about um, routine stuff, emergency stuff. So everyone should have a NIXA account. And this is where you will either register to vote or register to run, I should say. And it's also where you'll vote. And it's all, we, we could actually do a separate session on, on how to vote. It might be a good idea. But the voting, you'll, you'll see, if, if I was to log in and it would show me um, the council that I could vote for and all the names of all the, all the people. And you get three votes per child in the system. So if you have one kid in the system, you can vote for three different people. What was the next question, Kevin?
Do you have to start in P T A first to then move up to run to be on T E C?
You don't.
And can you please explain again the progression from those three, from the last question?
So the progression for, so from P T A, if you are a president of a P T A, then you become a member of the President's Council. If you are the chairperson of the Title One Parent Advisory Council, you're a member of the District Title One Parent Advisory Council. If you are um, want to run for the school leadership team, you have to declare as a candidate at the, um, at the meeting in the spring. Um, and the P T A will vote, vote you on. The P T A will vote on who they want to be on the school leadership team. Uh, that happens in the spring. And then that, that's the same for becoming an officer of your P T A. If you want to become an officer of the P T A, just stay involved, go to the meetings through the school year. And then in the spring, there will be a vote on president, recording secretary and treasurer. Was that it, Kevin?
Yeah, oh, we have another question?
Yep.
So uh, she comments, I'm so glad to send this meeting. I think it is something for my community as well. It's great to hear. So my question is, to get involved, I need to go to school meeting P T A and give information to be elected? Question mark.
And, and so sorry, Kevin, I was distracted with another question. Can you just repeat that?
The question is, to get involved, do I need to go to a school P T A and give my information to be elected?
You, you don't, you don't need to, you don't need to give your information to anyone to be elected until the meeting in the spring. Yona, can you maybe talk about how the process, just from a personal perspective on the P T A being elected president? How that work? Yona, can you hear me?
Maybe I can help to answer that.
Go for it, Joyce.
Okay, so uh, P T A meeting is monthly, so never announced when there's an election, election from the P T A onboard. So on that day, you'll be, you need to be in the business because you need to nominate yourself. Then uh, you will get other people to vote. If only one is nominate, then they will be say, they will say you be select. If other people nominate, no, that's a competition. You have instruction about yourself, then that of parents to vote for you. So when the nominee, so you need a first in the meeting to nominate yourself. Then parents vote for you. Then they will say who's being select on board.
Got it, that makes sense. Sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, Steve, I was having some technical issues. Thank you, Joyce. Um, okay, so I'll just add on to um, her comment. Um, one of the, like, one of the ways to make um, to make the parent body aware that you'd like to be nominated is also by being an active member of the P T A. So the way that I started uh, last year was by attending the meetings and meeting with the executive board. And I started off by being an executive secretary. I know a lot of parents here talk about the, how much time is involved. So if you, if you are uh, in a president role, you will definitely be more involved than somebody with a recording secretary or a treasurer by the nature of the things that you need to do. So it's always a good advice uh, to start off by running um, for another executive position. And then once you have some experience and are more familiar, um, you can um, you know, even run for president. That's the route that I took because I do believe that once you commit to something, you really have to put in all your effort. Um, however, it, it is a big, uh, it's a big networking opportunity. And it also um, e- even as part of the C E C, I am saying that um, it is also a personal growth um, that I believe all C E C members have gone through just because of the experience and the exposure that being involved gets you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Yona.
Oh. Actually, Steve, uh, I just want to say, when I, when I submitted myself during the pandemic, I, I actually didn't, wasn't an active, like, member of the P T A, like, very active member of the P T A. But I think it helps to get votes to be an act, very active member.
Right.
But you could, you could apply for the C E C with no experience, just as long as you want to be a speaker for your children and for the community. And like, it all depends on, like, we're, we're very flexible in our C E C because Steve does a lot of heavy lifting. And if, and if you don't have time for it, and sometimes when you're sick, he's very understanding in our C E C. So, yeah.
Thank you.
It, it really, the time, the time that you put in is, you know what you can, but the once a month is what, was required, but everything else is extra. And, but those extras should be good for our children because we're, we're still speaking out. And sometimes speaking out is good because then you have a voice. Because not, every time you go in some C E C meeting, you, you might not be able to speak up or, or have the platform for your children and your community. So I'm just saying, from my point of view, I, I, I like it.
Great, thank you, Elizabeth.
You're welcome.
There's a question in the chat. Our meet, meetings are virtual. So each C E C can do their own, make their own decisions. Um, some C E Cs are all virtual. Some have gone to hybrid meetings. The state law, if there was no pandemic, state law requires all meetings be in person. Things have changed and the city has allowed meetings to stay all virtual if you want. And the city has also allowed you to do hybrid meetings. So we do hybrid meetings, we'll meet at a school, but we'll also have people online. Um, and, and members can choose. You can choose if you want to get to the school and see each other in person, or if you can't make it that night and just want to dial in online, you can do that too. I'm just gonna, I'm looking at the chat to get other questions. Um, I do want to come back to something that parent coordinator, uh, Locasana was, we were messaging about. I don't um, but let me, I'll come back to that one. Question, what is the timeframe for when one can run for the C E C and when does voting begin and end? Great question. You, you can submit your application now and you have until February thirteenth to do it. And just to put the information in the chat one more time. Here is the website on where you go to to run. That's the main D O E website. Where you can go to sign up and run for the election. And then the voting happens, I'm gonna get the exact dates here. But it's something like April to May. And I just want to get the exact dates. I'm gonna find those and put those in the chat. But voting, voting starts in April. And a very important date to remember is March thirteenth is the candidate forum for all C E C members in District Twenty. So on March thirteenth, we will have uh, an online forum like this. And everyone who's running will get a chance to introduce themselves and everyone will answer questions so that members of the public can meet the candidates who are running. So that's March thirteenth and then voting happens in April, voting ends in May. And then the winners are declared in June and you start serving in July. Yeah, Yona makes a good point. In her school, the, on the P T As, they're, they're doing in-person meetings in her school. So you can, some organizations are going all in person now. Any other questions? These are great questions, very, very relevant questions. Any questions, Kevin, Kevin Zhao or Kevin Wiesnay? Any that you've seen from um, language lines?
No, none of mine.
Okay.
Not from you either.
Okay.
Steve?
Yes.
Would I be able to speak for a moment?
Yeah.
Um, we just, we just want to really encourage our parents to, when they come out of preschool, you have all spent so much time with us and we have engaged with you during the school day, our PAC meetings, coming in, meetings about parent information workshops. So you're really ready to go out there and be part of this. You have a lot of skills and information that you can share for early childhood. And, and you know, don't be afraid, don't think time is a factor or language is a factor. Once you get into the elementary school, there are so many supports there and there are so many more opportunities because it's a, it's a larger community. You'll also find a lot of parent friends and resources and you should really get out there uh, and, and join. Uh, Lauren and I are both parents and, and we understand the importance of it as parents as well as principals. But please don't be afraid. All you have to do is show up and everything else will happen after that.
It's well said, very well said. Great, well, I think we um, can probably um, let everyone go. C E C members, please stay around. We, we have to do one budget action. And I guess if anyone wants to stay around and watch a, C E C members um, in action, you go ahead. Because we just have to make up, we're gonna use this meeting to make one change to our budget. But otherwise, thank you so much, everyone for attending. Thank you, Danielle. Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody.
And um, parent coordinator Locasana, Camille, this was your idea. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you so much.
Yeah, of course.
Appreciate your work and I need to thank you all so much.
Yeah.
Great night, thank you.
Yeah, have a good night.
Thank you. Bye, guys.
Thank you, family.
Good night.
Bye.
Bye bye.
Oh, Steve, uh, will this recording be available?
Yes, sure.
Okay, great, awesome.
Yep.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yep. And Kevin Wiesnay, keep the recording going because we need to do a, a budget item. But um, otherwise, everyone can stay or drop off, whatever. So C E C members, we just have to, because the, the way the D O E budget works, Kevin, I think it's like February, what's the deadline? Eight? Yeah, so by February eighth, we have to make, sort of finalize our, our, our expenses. Uh, and so remember the last meeting, we talked about getting a an owl, right, for virtual meetings? And so all I'm gonna propose we do now is we have to make a motion officially to add this to the meeting agenda. Because a special meeting, you, unless you vote to add something, it can only be for one thing. But if we vote on it and we add a discussion of the budget um, to this meeting for the purchase of this owl, we can do that. So is there a motion to add that to the agenda?
Motion to add to the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so Kevin, do you want to just kind of quickly walk through? Like, I'm, I'm a believer and I don't think you need to go into too much detail, but just sort of, again, pitch the owl and then talk about the, the numbers that we were thinking about?
Uh, sure, let me just fill up, I mean, so we can have a visual presentation of what it is really quick, just because I want to show my screen really quick.
And I sent it, I, I, it was a while ago, it was like a month ago, but I sent a link around at some point, or Kevin, maybe you did, with like a YouTube video just showing. When I watched the YouTube video of how this thing works in a meeting room, um, I was sold on it. Like, I think it would be amazing because then, I'll let Kevin talk about it. Go ahead, Kevin.
Sure, um, so I noticed that, well, I'm pretty sure we're gonna continue doing hiring meetings. It's the best option so far. We have so many guests uh, online. And so during meetings, we've all been there where someone's computer is not muted and then you hear echo or audio leaks. And it just, we had to stop the meeting, say, hey, you're muted, hey, you're not muted. And to fix that, um, this is called an Owl Meeting Pro. And what it does is the size of a hydro flask, almost a little water bottle, and it has a three, three hundred sixty D U camera. And the best feature that has is that it auto focuses and, and um, it auto focuses with the camera on the person who's speaking and has eight different microphones. So there's no need to have everybody join through their phone or devices. They can if they want to, but they will never have to mute themselves and never have to worry about their audio coming out. It'll all be here. If you wanted to, the best thing, the maybe most promising feature is, say, you walk into a meeting in person at a school, all you could do is to sit down and start talking. There's no need to set up anything on your end. That's the best, that's, yeah, that's the explanation I can give. Um, that's the best, that's, yeah, that's the explanation I can give.
And it, it was amazing to me, the technology, just how, um, how good it is, picking up people that are speaking and, um, and it would, like Kevin said, we wouldn't have to worry about our laptops, like, you just, it's so much simpler at the, at the in-person meetings. We'd sit around tables and, um, the, the owl would basically be the, the, the eyes and ears, so.
Yeah, and I did some more research about technical things, like some issues that could arise, like, say we're too close to the owl, but, um, I'll just list some things that I, that maybe, maybe you guys think of some issues that might arise, but I already kind of addressed them in a way. Uh, say you're too close to the camera, it's a wide angle camera, so you can be really close, but it's, since it's wide lens, it, you won't, it'll, it'll be fine. Um, since you might think, because it's a, a microphone's all around, it'll pick up audio from behind where we don't want it to, but this called a, I think it's called a white screen. So basically, we can have one side of the microphone not pick up anything. So say the microphone is here and you're speaking in front, you can block this audio off. So the audience, if the audience is talking, it won't pick up anything, it'll stay focused on everybody in front of you. Um, maybe other difficulty, I don't, other technical things that I, that may come up, I don't, uh, maybe that it does have a, a control, it has a iOS app control, but that'll be on my end, so no one will have to worry about that. And then maybe one other issue is the price, but that's for you guys to decide.
Kevin, can you share the latest budget numbers? Have those quickly.
Yeah, I have that. It's, it's on the email, so it might be a little hard to see, but this way I can pull up. Um, equipment budget line is the first one, we're at one one nine two, which I actually think if we're tax exempt, which we are, I think it covers it because the owl is ten forty-nine.
Great, I wonder if, I wonder if there's any reason to just transfer a little more money over there just to be safe?
Yeah, that might be.
Um, because I think everyone, like, we're, the year is gonna be over before we know it and everyone, your reimbursements, those are safe, those are all budgeted for, you can ream, you can claim those right up until the end of the year. But anything else we don't spend just goes back to the D O E. So a lot of this, the, a lot of the money here, I'm, you know, I'm not sure we're gonna have, um, you know, I'm just looking at some of the, some of the items here, supplies. Kevin, do you have any recommendations? Like, if we were to just transfer over another couple hundred bucks out of one of these areas?
Um, recommendations, maybe, actually, no, we can leave contact, contact, as we'll talk about later, but, uh, refreshments and family, I'm not sure if you guys are gonna have, I don't think, if we're gonna have another in-person event. Event, there's also the event line, that's eighteen hundred and, uh, refreshments and families, that's eleven hundred, maybe take something from there. Uh, supplies and P card, uh, probably not gonna get P card, but supplies, um, for the in-person meetings, I do have to buy ink soon.
Okay.
Yeah, just, maybe just leave supplies and P card alone, that should be enough to cover it for the rest of the year.
Okay.
I'm looking at many events and refreshments and family.
Sure, and we're just, I, I think if we just transfer two hundred bucks, add it to that equipment.
Yeah.
I think that's fine, right?
Yeah, that's, that should be good enough.
Okay. So I'll just make a motion to, or I, I can't make a motion, is there, I, I would like to propose a motion to transfer. Um, Kevin, what are the amount, what's, I can't see the amounts in events, the amounts in?
Uh, for events, it's eighteen hundred and then refreshments and family, we're looking at one thousand, one hundred sixty dollars.
So let's take, I, is there a motion to take two hundred dollars out of events, transfer it to equipment and then authorize the purchase of the meeting owl out of the equipment budget? That's, is there a motion to do that?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
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 And then we should do a, let's do a roll call vote for this because it's a budget item.
Sure.
Vito, are you good to do a roll call vote or do you want Kevin to?
I'm ready as well.
Okay.
Just fill out the sheet. Okay, so Stephen Snow?
Um, approved.
Jennifer Yu? Jennifer?
Jen's not here.
Okay, oh, Elizabeth Chen?
Uh, yes, approve.
Vita La Bella?
Yes, approve.
Marie Bugares?
Approve.
Gada Amin?
Approve.
Yonai Sufi?
I approve.
Li Ping Yang?
Approve.
Meyer Rosenblatt?
I don't think Maya's here.
No. Uh, Joyce?
Yes, approve.
And Kevin Zhou?
Yes.
Okay, so it passes with a vote to nine yeses.
Great, thank you, Kevin, or thank you, everyone.
I have, I'm, I'm sorry, I have one question. Kevin, can you go back to the budget again? The screen, the budget screen you showed before?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, right.
So, um, I saw all, most of a commit, the most nine, the committee is zero. So what's the balance? Does that mean we didn't spend any of those money?
For, say again, for which, which item?
I mean, I seen a screen, like, uh, almost every, every nine, the committed column is zero dollars. Does it mean we didn't spend any money yet?
That's correct, yep. Um, it has to be, this is from this earliest month, that, uh, January third, so we did take some money from reimbursement, remember? I think we're sitting at around thirteen hundred dollars, so they should be updated soon. I have to ask the S G O for that. But everything else, um, events, refreshments, E chalk, no, not E chalk, sorry, supplies, everything else is zero, except maybe two lines has not been impacted yet.
And, uh, so we didn't spend money?
Yeah. It's, it's, it's surprising how often that happens because at the start of the year, you, you look at the budget and you think it's not, but the year goes by fast and, go ahead, Vito.
Uh, are they still reimbursing seventy-five dollars for internet?
Yep, you can go ahead and send, I can send you a link again, I think it's an early bus, send to you individually, the forms you can submit to me.
I think I have the old forms, but could you send me the new forms?
Sure.
There might be two forms that you need.
There's two, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I'll just put out there and we can, uh, actually, Kevin, Kevin Wiesnay, can you remind me, like, the deadline? So February eighth is the deadline to move money in the budget, right?
For equipment.
For equipment only?
Yeah.
Okay, but, but we can still approve new spending after February eighth?
Yeah, it's just, I think, uh, I don't have, I have, I may, I can look fairly quickly, but there are a couple of dates where we can move around the budget and that's finalized. But then once that's over, we can, we can still spend money, but we can't move money around.
Right. Because I think we should, I really think we should think about this, this events budget and the, the food and refreshments budget and about doing something. Um, and we can talk more about that, what that looks like. I don't, I don't know if we wanna spend time, unless people want to, spend time talking about it now. Um, but I think we should try to do that, you know, it doesn't have to be, remember last year, the legislative breakfast, which was amazing, thank you, Marie? Um, that was a big event, that took a lot of planning. Um, we may not have the energy to do something like that again right now, but we could do, there, there's lots of other ideas. And so we should all think about ideas, um, for an event, um, a parent event, um, and spend this budget money that we have, um, and, and do something that, that we think is beneficial for parents in the district. So, um, if anyone wants to chat about that now, feel free, or we can, you know, we can wrap up this, end this meeting and just, you know, do that another time. Kevin, what's this, oh, this is the, these are the deadlines, right?
Just looking at it quickly, I think the third is the last day for, uh, March third, excuse me, the last day for all, um, budget modifications, but I'll confirm with S G O with that, but just looking at what it says, yeah, everything, a bunch of things are finalized. Uh, lastly for budget modifications, uh, I can't say what this is, but it's the one there and then again here, lastly, budget modifications for non-equipped and furniture. And I believe that, that relates to, uh, parent events and refreshments.
Okay.
So, yeah, March third.
Uh, I think we should set up another special meeting for the budget or do it on the next C E C meeting, cause some people are missing today.
Yeah. Yeah, the next C E C meeting, that's a great idea, like at the business meeting on February eighth. Yep.
Yeah.
Agree, Elizabeth.
Yeah, cause, uh, yeah, too many people missing, so I, I, I rather, or we weren't ready for that. And then we could talk about having, planning an event and having ideals for events.
Yeah, yeah, totally.
Yeah.
All right, um, anything?
And I'm sorry, I only brought it up because I saw the budget and I thought that, given that we've been an active C E C to wrap up the year, you know, our group year in a, in a positive way to the community, so that's why.
No, it totally makes sense.
I wasn't planning on that, I just came up with it.
No, it totally make, it's a great idea. Um, okay, um, I think that's it for the night. I'll let everyone, we can, I'll get back to our, our families in the evening. Um, is there a motion to adjourn the special meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
In a second? All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.